Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome, 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 everyone, to this absolutely wonderful celebration of Rancho Cordova's past, present, and future. What a wonderful group of people we have here tonight. People who have been so important to the city and will continue to be important as we go into the future. So we're going to ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Terry?
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Here.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Here.
Mayor Budge?
Here, thank you. We're going to start, as we always do, with our Pledge of Allegiance and with an invocation. And tonight, we are pleased to welcome our colleague back to do the invocation, Ken Cooley, former Assemblymember Ken Cooley. And we will ask our former City Councilmember and Mayor McGarvey to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if we would all stand.
Mayor Budge, before that, can we make an announcement about the playback schedule?
Everybody sit down.
Sorry. The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Friday, July 7th at 6:00 PM and Saturday, July 8th at 7:00 PM. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrokable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the City Clerk's Department, and a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you for all that lovely legal information, Stacy. Now could we all please stand? Bob? Actually, you know, no, I'm sorry.
Sit down.
Shelley?
Invite the band.
Okay, so we actually have an even more special presentation tonight. Our colors are being presented by the Mills Junior High drum corps and the ROTC from Cordova High. Ladies and gentlemen, please advance.
Parade rest.
One.
Drum line, attention.
March stage.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's salute our incredible young people.
Let us pray. Lord, it is good that we come to you by way of invocation to invite your blessing upon this evening, this time together, indeed upon this city. And it is fitting, Lord, because this is a part of this city. In this very room, a little boy about nine years old wrote on the concrete floor here, "I hope City Hall will be the best city hall ever, and God is watching over all the city people." Lord, this city is a product of 20 years of hard work. And, Lord, we know how we hoard our hours, our human labor, to try to craft a thriving city in this place. And even as we hoard our hours, Lord, we look around Rancho Cordova and we know that you have scattered ages. We see the rivers. We find the cobble, which is from ancient rivers. We find the clay, which was laid down so long ago in so many backyards. So many evidences, Lord, of your work in this great valley, setting up this place, Rancho Cordova, that now we celebrate 20 years. That's your timetable, but, Lord, we thank you for other timetables. We thank you for the Army Air Corps, which came here in 1918, which then became the Air Force, which brought us Bob McGarvey, who met Deo Hagan and Joan Dean, and together in the 1970s worked on Cityhood when it was a long way from accomplishment. Lord, we just see that tonight's celebration of 20 years as a city has so many antecedents in this beautiful place you've created, yet it's taken human effort and hours that we've all hoarded intently. Lord, we just thank you for this night. We thank you for this celebration. We thank you for the way in which this city has thrived, the way it has grown, and we are reminded that, as testified to in the Book of Jonah, you are a God not just of people, even of cities, that you had compassion on another vah city, Nineveh, that had nothing to do with your people and that you cared for it. We thank you for your care for Rancho Cordova, for all the hopes expressed in this city hall, for all the hopes for the future, and just bless us this night, as you have these last 20 years, and thank you for all the leaders in the diocese. We thank you for Linda Budge, who is the longest-serving public official perhaps in this room, except maybe Don Natoli.[776.51][776.51](laughter) And then David Sander, who has risen in such national eminence at the League of Cities. We thank you for his life, but we thank you for Garrett and Siri and Donald and all the staff together. But we just thank you that you are the keeper of all good things. You establish the work of our hands, and we consecrate the next 20 years to you also. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much, Ken. Please be seated. So our one informal presentation tonight is for our councilmember Siri's birthday. So happy birthday, Siri.[823.32][823.32](laughter) Garrett?
You know what time it is.
Take it away.
We have a big audience.
And we have a big audience, so everyone's got to help me do this for Siri. She is 26 years old.[833.75][833.75](laughter) All right. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Siri Pulipati. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you so much. I think this is the best birthday song I've ever received.[869.23][869.23](laughter) It's probably the biggest.
It is absolutely the biggest.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will go into public comment. This is the opportunity for people in the public to comment on things that are not on the agenda tonight, and we would ask you to take three minutes and tell us what's on your mind. And remember, please, that, as always, we cannot take action on what you are here to discuss tonight, but if we can hook you up with staff or if we can schedule an item on a future agenda, then we will do that. So Stacy, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. And if you're joining us via Zoom, we would like to invite you to raise your hand using the Raise Hand feature, and if you are joining us by telephone, please use star and number nine.
Thank you.
Okay, so those that I have received speaker cards for, starting are Paul Bardwell. Following Paul will be Darrell Langwell, James Garcia, and Helen Wayland-Bashaw. Paul?
Paul, welcome.
Why don't you stand here?
You can come up to the podium.
Yes, please come up to the podium.
I'm not going to sing to Siri again.[949.12][949.12](laughter)
There's a timer at the podium, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Paul Bardwell, and I'm a relatively new citizen of Rancho Cordova. Proud to be here and enjoying it so far. Been here for two years. However, I live in Cordova Meadows, right behind the school on the first house, and the traffic flow there is just really a little bit scary. I found out six months before I moved in, a car had gone 85 miles an hour and jumped off the road and took out a wall and ended up tearing up a gas line, and they had to shut down the neighborhood. Then since I've been there, about six months ago, another car hit a tree behind my house and close to the school. The school is maybe 150 feet behind. And then the third event, a car was speeding down the street and took out two cars that were parked. There's probably been 10 squirrel deaths, two dogs, and since I live right around, you know, literally, I'm the first house from the school, I'm just concerned that there are no speed bumps at all. There's only two signs with MPH on it, and I'm just concerned that, you know, eventually there's going to be a death of a child because the speed of the people going around that curve is just too much. I did try to find the person in charge of the city. That person did put one sign up, but it's just really not enough. And I'm concerned, you know, for the liability of the city, for the liability of the school, that the school zone should have an expanded area with speed bumps. There's none at all in front of that elementary school, and that's all.
So Paul, we have our CPD in the back of the room, and also is Albert here? Is Public Works here? Oh, Albert, I'm sorry, you're standing right there in the middle. So how about talk to them tonight? And there is definitely a process to initiate speed bumps on highly traveled streets like that, and so they can bring you up to speed on it.
Okay, thank you.
Literally, sorry. Bad analogy.
Down to speed.
Yeah, down to speed. Darrell?
My name's Darrell Langwell. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm from the Vineyards neighborhood. Tomorrow, we're going to celebrate the 247th birthday of our country as an independent nation, and there's a lot of stuff going on right now that, to me, is a bit discouraging with some of the negative attitudes towards our country. There are two things that I would like for people to look up on Facebook, and check out Red Skelton talking about the Pledge of Allegiance. That's one of the most poignant things I've ever heard in my life. And it was many years ago that Gordon Sinclair wrote his commentary, "The Americans." He's a Canadian, and his commentary about the Americans talks about what this country did for other countries in distress. So I would encourage everybody, take a few minutes, look those up on Google, and check Gordon Sinclair, "The Americans," and Red Skelton, "The Pledge of Allegiance."
Thank you, Darrell. Wonderful reminder. James?
Let's see, make sure. Okay. Good evening, City Council and City staff. I am James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. Congratulations on the 20 years, and it was nice to see some of you at the musical performances and ice cream social Friday night. I am here to speak tonight about some concerns I have had during some City Council meetings. At the last meeting on June 19th, I felt that the residents that spoke during public comment portions of the meeting were treated unfairly. I am stating this because before speakers are allowed to come forward, it's stated that the council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on it. Any item not on the agenda that the speakers have up to three minutes is tuck. On several occasions, speakers were interrupted by more than one member of the council and or city manager. This was not the first time residents have been interrupted while speaking during council meetings. The result of being interrupted for many people is a loss of their place on their speech or a loss of their train of thought as to what they are going to say. For many people, getting up in front of a crowd is a scary experience, and to be interrupted causes more fear for the speaker. When a councilmember engages the speaker in a semi-question-and-answer session, this ultimately shortens what the speaker had planned on stating during their limited three minutes. If you wish to address this speaker for clarification, then I would ask that the council hold your questions for them until they have had the time to say what they desired. It would better serve the speaker to be asked after they had had the chance of uninterrupted speech. My other concern is with the process of when public comment is during the agenda sections. A councilmember made a comment that the public comment is made after a staff presentation and before the council asks their questions. I feel this would be a disservice to the public. My reason behind this remark is because we, as the public, only get three minutes to speak to make our point come across. Many times, the council has used our comments in a way that was not intended, and we do not get a second chance to correct the wrongdoing. Other residents change what they plan to say after hearing the comments from the presentation and council's questions or comments to better explain a point of view. Taking this away from us cuts off the public's voice as a last-chance effort to change a viewpoint and give alternate ideas. My wife wanted to also speak, but unfortunately, she didn't have time. She had some concerns on the June 5th meeting. She was talking with some friends outside about school, and a councilmember approached and started to state how they felt about the city, and the councilmember did not care about the residents or the communities. This upset the councilmember. The councilmember went off yelling at her and her friend, telling them they had no right to say that city councilmembers don't care, that many of you devote our lives to improving the city. This went on for several minutes. Finally, it took time to change that. Fast forward to the last meeting. In the chambers, there was conversation with others randomly, talking about things, and another councilmember approached and took up a personal offense to what the person said. Again, should have been done in private as opposed to out in public. I would go on, but I don't have time. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Next speaker, Helen Wayland-Bashaw.
Helen, welcome.
Greetings, folks. I'm Helen Wayland-Bashaw. I live over near Rod Bowdre. I am one of the people who, in the past, has had my three minutes cut off by Linda. Last week, last meeting, four of us had our time cut off. You've got to stop it because everything that Mr. Garcia said is true. Some of the people shake when they get up here. They have it written out. They've timed it, and as soon as you cut in, they lose their train of thought. They lose their courage to get up here. It needs to stop. Another thing that happened after the meeting, unbeknownst to me, I get verbally abused by Ms. Siri at the meeting, after the meeting. There were three other people witnessed it. I had no clue what the $800 was until Mr. Garcia explained it to me after the meeting. Every one of you agreed to take these jobs on. These jobs require a lot of hours, and there's very little compensation, but anybody, including myself, who works for the government knows your pay does not cover all the hours and effort you put in to have a successful job and a successful organization. So I understand that, but I am tired of being in people's whipping post. I find it absurd. I find it that it lacks maturity, and it is, I feel I'm owed an apology, a public apology. I don't think it's ever going to happen. The other issue I want to talk about is I have called Albert at Public Works regarding what you classify as a weed abatement. Over a month ago, I challenged the fact that you're cutting grass that's over three feet tall. You're leaving it on the ground. All you're doing is adding fuel to the fire. So I've yet to get the answer of whether it's legal or not legal, but I was at an event in the city two nights ago, and Metro Fire told me that it is illegal. It must be picked up. So I would like somebody from the city to get back to me and tell me what we're going to do with all the grass that's laying down on the ground. You know, I hate to be a person that says a lot of negatives, but it seems like I have, in the past, have complimented people, but I'm getting tired of being on the negative side and people being rude in a position that takes my three minutes away, which I understand is a Brown's Act issue, and yet we don't have our attorney cutting in to give us what we deserve. So thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Helen.
Mayor Budge, in addition to the speakers that we've heard this evening, the City Clerk's Office also received some public comment via email. Those emails have been distributed to the City Council. They've been printed and placed in a binder in the back of the council chambers, and they have been placed on the city's website. Those public comments came from the following individuals: Carl Salmason, Julene Stensel, and Lori Langham. And there are no public comments via Zoom. I do not see any hands that are raised.
Thank you, Stacy. So we'll go on to council reports, and we'll start with Donald.
I'll be brief. I don't think I had any boards or commissions during the last couple of weeks. One, I want to thank the community council and everybody else that have worked so hard for what we're going to do today that has already started, what we're doing tomorrow, and the rest of the parades and everything else. And I also want to thank Dr. Aguilar from Sac City Unified. His last day was last week. I believe he may have been the second-longest-tenured superintendent that Sac City Unified ever had. For those of you who don't know, Sac City is the school district for the western end of the city. It's actually the school board I was on before I served on this city council. He did a lot of great work for that community and for our community, and it was a pleasure to work with him, and we wish him the best of luck in his future endeavors. Yeah, with that, thank you again to all of the staff and everybody else for all their hard work, for all the fun we're about to have.
Thank you, Donald Garrett.
I don't reiterate, I feel so sorry for Shelley. Wherever you are, Shelley, we love you. We appreciate you. I'm so sorry everyone's so difficult, but the good news is, it's almost over. Two more days, and it's almost over. Super excited. Whoever doesn't know, 4th of July, we are having amazing stuff. We are having a laser show with drones that may be shot down by fireworks. It's going to be exciting. I just joke, I say that out loud, but no, it's going to be great. And then I had a meeting with a guy that wants to come to Rancho Cordova to build robots. So I thought that was just literally one of the coolest things out there, and the amount of tech companies that because of Solidion setting up here that are now trying to find a home in Rancho Cordova and eat up all that new office space, which everyone knows is cheap, but they're looking at it as anything they can stick in there. So robots, software development, gov tech is all starting to find itself over to Rancho Cordova. So very exciting, and happy 4th, and whoever's running tomorrow morning, I'm sorry about that. That's a terrible thing for you to do.[1691.11][1691.11](laughter)
Garrett, thank you. Siri?
So I echo Councilmember Garrett's statements on getting more tech to the city. We need more of that. Happy 4th of July. There's a lot of effort that's been gone into making the 4th of July a fantastic success by the Cordova Community Council. I hope to see all of you tonight at the fireworks at Hagan Park, at the parade tomorrow, at the run tomorrow, and even, again, if you miss today, the festivities tomorrow. I think we'll have cupcakes also later, right?[1724.22][1724.22](laughter) Have some of those. Yeah, that's it. That's it for me today.
Thank you, Siri. David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, it has been an outstanding couple of weeks. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. One was the Friday night concert at the Performing Arts Center at Cordova High. That was the first time our Rancho Cordova Symphony d'Or and our Rancho Cordova River City Concert Band performed on the same stage, not together, because there literally isn't room for them, they're both too big, but at one venue and one concert, and they had an ice cream social to boot. The place was absolutely packed. I don't know how many of you here were there. It was an outstanding event, and you think about where we were 20 years ago with regard to arts in Rancho Cordova and where we are now with those two groups essentially bolting existence because of our actions here in this city. So it is an amazing thing. It was a great way to celebrate sort of the kickoff of our 20th anniversary. And then we followed that on Saturday night with an art event with David Garibaldi in our award-winning Capital Village neighborhood, right in the park in the middle. David is a performing artist. David is a performance artist. You may have seen or heard from him before. Amazing production he did. He painted Mill Station sort of in front of you on a big canvas with music blaring and people clapping for him, and he did it such a way you weren't even sure what it was, you know, as it starts. It's really an amazing process. And again, this great artistic effort going on here in Rancho Cordova, just emblematic, I think, of many of the great things we've done as a city. And I want to thank, in particular, Shelley Blanchard. Shelley's in the back. Would you stand up, Shelley? She doesn't like this. Shelley is Executive Director of the Cordova Community Council. They are the city's partner for executing great things like all of the events. How many do we have a year, Shelley? Over 100 events in Rancho Cordova the Community Council puts on for us as a city, as a population? And they are in charge of our birthday events, along with city staff. Thank you, city staff, for all of your good work here. But in particular, they are in charge of the 4th of July and everything going on. So, Shelley, right now, is managing both of the giant events that are going on in Rancho Cordova this year at the same time. So, kudos to you and her actually very tiny staff for pulling that off. So, with that, Happy Independence Day. We've got some great stuff to do over the next two days here in Rancho Cordova, and Happy Birthday, Rancho Cordova.
Thank you, David. I would echo absolutely everything everybody has said. This has been, June has been an incredible month leading up to tonight. It has been a remarkable celebration of the arts here in Rancho Cordova, of the music here in Rancho Cordova, things that we would never have, even though we dreamed a million dreams two decades ago, we would never have been able to envision that we would come to the success that we enjoy this year here in Rancho Cordova. And there's a lot of people here in this room who have participated in getting us to that point, and you all know who you are, and I could raise hands, and everybody in the room would raise their hands. Thank you especially, yes, to Shelley and the Cordova Community Council, and we do want to see you as we transition from celebrating our city's 20th anniversary into celebrating the something like 237th. I'm sure Darryl or somebody knows exactly how many years it is of the United States as an independent country. So, with that, I will turn it over to Mica, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I really just want to echo what has already been said, and I think we're in mid-celebration between all the events that started this weekend, and so, as we are in mid-celebration, I'll just want to be brief and just say, let's keep the party going. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Did you just say, "Keep the party going"? That's how we do, people. That's our city manager. Keep the party going.
Rancho Cordova parties well. We have at least one former city manager here, and Rancho Cordova parties well. He knows that. So, we have one regular item of business, our consent calendar items, which can be deemed routine in nature, and they can be approved with one vote unless somebody chooses to pull an item off the consent calendar, items 9.1 through 9.6. Stacy, do we have any public comment on any of those items?
The City Clerk's Office has not received any public comment for items on the consent calendar, and I do not see any hands that are raised in Zoom.
Thank you.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you, David. We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you very much. So, we do not have consent public hearing items tonight, nor do we have public hearing items tonight, but we have one regular calendar item, which ought to be called "Party." So, Stacy, if you would read the title of that item, please.
Celebration of the City of Rancho Cordova's 20th Anniversary.
So, we have a group of people who have come tonight to help us celebrate, and I'm going to ask all of the colleagues if we would all, David and Garrett, Donald and Garrett, if we would all come down here in the front?
Okay.
Because we have a lot of people who have brought us swag. So, we...
We brought swag.
Video first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm supposed, no, I know. I'm supposed to turn it, no, I'm supposed to turn it over to Mica, so he can show a video.
All right.
Sorry to dissuade you from getting on the floor and taking the gifts and the proclamations and things, but real quick, as the mayor mentioned, this is really a celebration of the past, the present, and the future, and as we want to honor those who have been a part of the pathway to get to this place, and lots of the individuals here. It was through individual volunteerism and who made it a reality with, I think, 78% of the vote that said yes, 77% that said yes, which was a record. And so, I think as we think about the next 20 years, it took 40 years to get to incorporation into a city, so we're only halfway to the distance it took to get to the final destination. So, we still got a lot of good to come. I think we need to celebrate this moment, express our gratitude for this moment, and 20 years is a long time, and a lot of good work has gone into those 20 years. And so, with that, I think we're excited to look to the future and excited to carry the momentum that happened in the incorporation with the innovation, the grit, the determination, and taking risks as a community to be successful and to be a part of a growing community. And I think as the city team and the city staff team is ready to get on board, I guess as we'll get on a train later, and move forward with the next 20 years and express the same culture that was created through incorporation. So, with that, I will just introduce the video.
So, just like Friday night, I want to personally thank Shelley for having chosen that piece of music. I'm probably the only one in this room that hadn't seen that movie, but I've heard the song twice now, and it couldn't have been more important, more apropos. So, we have some wonderful people who have come to provide resolutions to the city tonight, and I'm going to ask my colleagues to come down and join us here. David, Siri, Garrett, Donald? And I believe that we want to call on our congressman's office. Matt, you get to be first.
You can just turn around and do this.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. It's tough to go first as we sit in the room and we see the Honorable Ken Cooley. We see, I saw Mr. Natoli, of course. We've got our board chair here, Supervisor Desmond, so I guess Supervisor Desmond said, "Use the restroom now, because I'm going to be done speaking here shortly," and he's coming up here, and he wants to make sure the room's back ready to go. It's tough to go first, so as we have our mayor here. But it's an honor to be here in front of all of you today on behalf of Congressman Ami Barra. I'm here with my oldest daughter, Olivia, and we're excited to be here. The congressman has been representing Rancho Cordova for 10 years. But quickly, let me just talk about what brought me here, is my grandfather was stationed at Mather Air Force Base and got out of the Air Force and stayed here. So, as a child, I grew up working the movie theater at Mather, and that's what Rancho Cordova has, is a rich history, but it's what they're doing now. And you're going to hear a lot about Rancho Cordova leading in arts and leading in economic development and leading in being a community, but they're leading in caring for our veterans. They're standing by with Mather Veterans Village, with the opening of the VA Medical Center, with everything else that this city is doing. They're putting themselves behind our veterans, supporting our airshow, the greatest California capital airshow in the country, and everything else. This city is leading the way. So, it says "All-American City," and it just shows you this is a place we all want to be and continue to grow. And so, on behalf of Congressman Ami Barra, we have a proclamation that will be submitted to the Speaker of the House and submitted into congressional record, and so this can hang here, not just for the next 20 years, but for many more after that as well. Congratulations.
This is a drive-in, right?
It's a theater.
We had a theater?
Okay, so, we're going to take a picture?
Thank you, Matt. That's absolutely wonderful. Of course, as most of you know, or probably, hopefully, most of you know, this gentleman also served, this gentleman is an Army veteran. He's one of these people that didn't have sense enough to stay in the airplane. He's a paratrooper. So... Thank you, sweetie, and thank the congressman so much. We really appreciate it. So, next, I believe we have a representative from Senator Nilo, and then next will be our Assembly Member Hoover.
They're doing a joint resolution.
Pardon me?
They're doing a joint resolution. Oh, oh.
Very nice. So, you're representing both the senator and the assembly member.
Yes. Perfect.
Good evening, everyone. Hello. It's my honor to be here today on this very important occasion here, celebrating the city's 20th anniversary, and on behalf of Senator Roger Nilo and Assemblyman Josh Hoover, I wanted to present the city with the resolution from the legislature.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Celebrating once again the city's 20th birthday and applauding you guys for the contributions you guys, the city, have made to the Californian history. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much. It is heavy. Watch it. So, I think it's Supervisor Desmond's turn, and it's Pat.
We have a county contingent.
Yeah, Patrick.
Supervisor Natoli as well.
The original. Great. Great.
This will be a bit of a team effort here. I'm joined by Supervisor Pat Hume, representing the 5th District, and his predecessor, the legendary Supervisor Don Natoli, who's just, yes. And I'll just start it off first by saying thank you for having us here, and happy birthday, Siri. And Garrett, were you singing, by the way, during that song? I couldn't hear you. Maybe after I'm done, we'll give him the microphone, he can belt out a few, but I can imagine that. But let me just say, my first takeaway from this is, we got to jazz things up at the county a little bit, because this, it's so boring at the Board of Supervisors compared to this.
Not with the snacks, too.
And the snacks, I mean, you've got it all, and this is what, I guess, cityhood means, is you bring an awful lot more to the community. But I'll just say very quickly, you know, I was a young highway patrol officer assigned to the CHP South SAC office in 2000 and patrolled the roadways around. I'm also a 5th-generation Sacramento kid, but patrol the roadways around here while the incorporation, the last incorporation effort was going through. And as much as it pained me to be booted out of the city of Rancho Cordova as a highway patrol officer, which I think is to your detriment, really, no offense to my friends in Rancho Cordova Police Department back there, but I saw, you know, so quickly what an amazing...
(Laughter).
He doesn't want guilt by association. But I've seen over the years, and because I came back as a CHP commander in the ESAC Office of Trade Center, and now, I really have the honor to have a portion of the city of Rancho Cordova as part of District 3 on the Board of Supervisors. It is amazing what you do here for the people in this community in terms of the resources, the amenities, the economic development, and just the level of attention and advocacy. And it is such a positive thing here to be in this room and to see all of you working so hard on behalf of the people of Rancho Cordova. And I can think of what a great opportunity to be on the eve of our All-American holiday to be celebrating this amazing All-American City. So, congratulations to all of you, and I'm not going to read the whole resolution because it goes into so much detail about you being an All-American City and number 12 in the top boom towns in this country. I mean, there's so many accolades, but I'll just read the last one. "On behalf of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Sacramento, State of California, we hereby join you in recognizing and celebrating the City of Rancho Cordova upon the auspicious occasion of your 20th anniversary and further wish the city, all its residents, and numerous businesses continued success and prosperity for many generations to come."
So, I'm the new supervisor, freshly on the job after my predecessor held the role for 28 years, the only supervisor Rancho Cordova ever knew. And I just want to say that, you know, I think what the chair was talking about is Rancho Cordova always puts a little extra special sauce on things, and that drum line to start things off really kind of set the mood, set the tenor, and you know, even the little bit of tongue-lashing that you guys had to endure tonight, that's part of democracy, and that's part of what we're celebrating. And local government, you know, really is as close to the people as you can get, and it's an important job, and it's an important role, and it's hard work, and it's good work. But I just want to say... work, and it's good work. But I just want to say that having grown up just to the south of here, I lived through Rancho Cordova, well, not necessarily in its heyday, but certainly when the military base was active, when Aerojet was going full strong, and it had some growing pains, we'll call it, there in the 80s and 90s. And I think that cityhood is the best thing that happened to this community. And really, the way that you have taken Rancho Cordova and moved it to the next level, and as Elk Grove was contemplating passing a sales tax measure, I used Rancho Cordova in the example that you've set of how much good you're able to do with that money, and put it back into the community. And in all those pictures that were up there celebrating the arts, I mean, that's really their money at work for them. And so congratulations on your birthday, congratulations on your birthday, and God bless America. And now the gentleman, this is the only time I ever get to precede Don Natoli. Everything else has been succeeding him, so here he is.
Thanks, Matt. Good job. Well, I won't go long, and I want to say I'm very pleased and delighted to be able to, wanted to be invited, but certainly to join you here this evening. And as I was watching the slideshow and hearing some of the presentations and the comments, and certainly from our chair and my successor on the board, I recall certainly many, many times spending hours in this community, working with this council and its predecessors. I look around the room, I see Ken Cooley, I see Bob McGarvey, George Bernash, he was so key in the cityhood effort, Kurt Haven, it's already been mentioned, obviously, Community Council and Shelley and all the folks. But the history and the tradition here in this community is so, so strong, deeply rooted, obviously, with the affiliation with the Air Force, but just in the, I think, the focus on the quality of life. And this council and all your predecessors, and certainly Linda, congratulations to you. I know you're a long-serving member, and I've had the good fortune and honor of having sworn you in when you were first elected, and also to join you last December, when I was last in the council chambers, to swear you in for your current term. But it really is tremendous to think back, and many of you in this audience who've been a part of day-to-day life, the improvements and contributions to this community, have really moved it forward. And when I see the slideshow, say, "A Million Dreams," I think about thousands of dreams have been fulfilled, because not only the leadership in the council, but the leadership in the community and the heart that this community has. And so I'm very, very honored to certainly have had a chance to represent, but to come to know many of you here in this chamber this evening, but throughout this community as friends and colleagues. And the work goes on, it will continue, but the future is bright. And I say congratulations, happy birthday to City of Rancho Cordova, to all my former colleagues, and certainly to all those in the audience. Again, you're always with me in my heart, and I'm glad to be here this evening. Congratulations.
So at this point, we're going to call up the current board chair of the Cordova Recreation and Park District, Michael Yearwood. Michael, oh, there you are. Michael's never presented a resolution before.
But I have followed Dawn before. Is this thing on? All right. I know. Well, thanks for everybody else not reading your resolution, so I'll do the same thing. Our board is, was, you know, really excited and happy to pass this resolution. On a personal note, before I kind of address a few of the things in there, I was just sitting down today thinking about, wow, 20 years. How the heck did that happen? I still remember going down to that old Thrifty's, I think that's where headquarters was, and I picked up a yard sign and signed my, all my information so you guys could send me all the stuff about cityhood. And did the county, oh, some of the county guys are still here. Sorry, guys. It was different 20 years ago. I started thinking, well, what if cityhood didn't happen? What would today be like? Would it eventually have happened? Would I still be living here if it hadn't happened, that kind of thing? So it's been an amazing 20 years. So I thank you, guys. Thank you, Mayor Budge. Thank you Vice Mayor Sander, council members Polapati, Terry, and Garrett, for what you do for the residents of this district. So I also think about where I live now was a dirt pile 20 years ago, and the house I had moved in 20 years ago was, I still remember driving down International going, what are those houses doing off in the distance? That was Stone Creek. I was like, it was the model homes for Stone Creek. So I was like, wow, okay. Next thing you know, I bought a house there. So and I am a, you know, my dad retired here, my mom liked seasons of weather. We were supposed to move back down to San Bernardino County, and she said, no, I like it here much better. So that's why we ended up here, and I'm glad we did. It's been, summer of '76 is when we moved into our house on Aramond Drive in Rancho Cordova. So it's, what, 47 years ago? And I have to laugh because people still call me a youngster. Oh, you only came here in '76. Ah, you're just a kid. So the board, we were, as a board, our resolution includes information about the many partnerships we've had with the city. They've helped us out with park courses at Sun River, Lincoln Village Park, recently, the pathways at Fettersville Park, which was my neighborhood park, and the, you know, the original park in the community. And I will say, my crowning achievement in my eight-plus years on the board was the renovation and replacement of the Cordova Community Pools. So those are beautiful pools. If you haven't seen them, please go see them. Go jump in them if you want. So, and many other things. So on behalf of the board, Patrick, our general manager, wanted to be here tonight, but he decided to go to Ireland instead. So our secretary, Rick Sloan, there is the guy with the camera, and you can definitely tell we're both in Parks and Rec. Look how we're dressed. So I'm going to Hagan right after this, so I got to be comfortable. I ain't built for this weather anymore. So again, thank you. Happy birthday. And I think that's good. All right.
And somebody's going to eventually have to tell me, why do these things have to say "whereas"?
Because somebody said so. Thank you so much, Rosario. The Honorable Alcalde de Ciudad de Folsom. Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to be here to give a resolution to the City of Rancho Cordova. I'm about to disappoint you. I'm not a real cowgirl, but the City of Folsom is having its third rodeo tonight, and I'm about to get back to 20 mutton-busting kids in about half an hour. Mutton-busting, that's my job. It's the best job in the rodeo. So with this resolution, there was one, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but there was one thing that stood out, and I'll share with you why Rancho Cordova is a very special place in my heart. It says, "Whereas, the City of Rancho Cordova serves as the largest employment centers in the region, with a workforce of more than 65,000 people. In December of '22, the city's impressive economic growth was recognized as a city was ranked 12 in the top boom towns of America by Smart Asset when assessing population, income, business, housing, and more." And so before I opened up a restaurant in 2016, I spent 10 years working at one of the largest healthcare organizations here in the Sacramento area, and it was in Rancho Cordova. So I watched the city from 2006 to 2016 boom. I met a lot of friends that purchased homes. I saw the revitalization on Folsom Boulevard. The college had come into town, and the City of Rancho Cordova was a much different city than when I first started my employment in 2006. And so congratulations on 20 years. This is an exciting time. I wish you all the best in the future, and here is a resolution. Thank you, Siri. Thank you, Vice Mayor YK. Enjoy your rodeo. Yee-haw. Okay, I believe we have a representative from the City of Citrus Heights. Oh, Citrus Heights sent a proclamation.
Right.
Okay. Elk Grove? Elk Grove?
They sent a proclamation.
Okay. But we have the City of Sacramento here. We did have.
You did have. Come on, Mindy.
Mindy.
So Ms. Bud, Mayor Budge, I dropped us off early so I would not need to make a presentation.
Oh, well. No, it's all right.
But on behalf of the City of Sacramento, I've got a resolution honoring your...
Mindy, we are thrilled to welcome back our former city clerk, for somebody who doesn't know. So, and she's, and she's... This wonderful lady does time as the city clerk in the City of Sacramento.
So it's an honor to be here and to be part of the Rancho Cordova family.
So we have a representative from Visit Rancho Cordova, Mark Sapoznick. They're part of that economic development that the supervisor was talking about.
All right, Mayor. Well, it's a real privilege to be here tonight amongst the community members here and so many faces that I see who have made a huge difference for this city, past the leaders like Ted out there, and so many that I can see. But one thing I'd, you know, just like to say is that these birthdays are fun to celebrate. So I think, you know, this is really a great thing. And it really is remarkable when you look at what has been accomplished in 20 years in this city. I mean, the changes are dramatic from the roads to, you know, the opportunities that, you know, that everybody has with better streets and all kinds of great things that have gone on here. You just can't, yeah, you just can't say enough. But I know that the next 20 years will really be special for this too, and it's going to be because of all of you, and I hope you take great pleasure in what you have all done to really set up the city for great success going forward. So with that, we wanted to say a quick thank you in recognition of your 20 years. Happy birthday, happy 4th of July to everybody. Yeah, and happy birthday, Siri.
Shelley Blanchard, Cordova Community Council. The brains, the brains behind this weekend.
Do I, can I talk in here? I wanted to share a short letter from the Cordova Community Council Foundation, its board members, its lively staff, and the hundreds and hundreds of Rancho Cordovans who volunteer to make our city so great through the Cordova Community Council. The Cordova Community Council Foundation, whose members proudly represented the citizens of Rancho Cordova as the original applicants seeking the incorporation of the City of Rancho Cordova more than two decades ago, congratulate you on your 20th anniversary. Founded in 1959, the Cordova Community Council has always been a place for Rancho Cordovans to gather together, to dream about our future, to harness the energy of citizens to achieve goals which are important to the community. We consider the successful incorporation of Rancho Cordova as our finest moment. Since incorporating on July 1, 2003, the Cordova Community Council has been closely watching, cheering you on, supporting the amazing evolution of our beloved Rancho Cordova. The changes in the physical environment are extraordinary. The attention to the needs of citizens is remarkable. We are the beautiful, safe, tolerant, and fun place to live we dreamed we could be. Many of us remember the march towards cityhood and the million dreams expressed regarding what we hoped our new city would be. We have been with you as the city moved boldly to bring many of those aspirations to reality. It has been hard work, not without challenges, and there have been a few detours along the way. But in pursuing the city's number-one goal of improving the image of Rancho Cordova, we share congratulations and declare mission accomplished. On this auspicious occasion marking 20 years of working together to build a great place to locate a business, get an education, and a great place to call home, we would like to share our hearty best wishes and recommit to another 20 years of helping residents fall in love with our city. Keep dreaming, Rancho Cordova.
We have a last-minute addition to the group here. Thank you. I'm joined by my daughter Lena and my son Archer. There are those of us that are safe enough to go off script, but we don't want to get to a party, so I'm going to stick to mine. So my name is Joey Peniman. I'm the current chair, the 2023 Chair of the Rancho Cordova Area Chamber of Commerce. It's my honor to extend our chamber's congratulations to you and our city for achieving the bicentennial anniversary. And yes, I had to look up what bicentennial meant. Within the chamber, we recognize that the city's commitment to fostering a conducive environment for business growth and development has been instrumental in creating countless opportunities for entrepreneurs and business owners in our community. We cannot underscore enough how valuable our partnership with the city has been and continues to be in building a balanced community for our businesses and residents. Anecdotally, I'd share that among my professional and personal peer groups, there has been a change in attitude about Rancho Cordova. When my wife and I selected Rancho Cordova as our home 11 years ago, there were some hesitations and reservations conveyed by my circle of friends. Fast forward to today, and several of those same friends and some new ones are choosing Rancho Cordova as their home. I attribute these changes to our city's leadership, guided by your active participation in our community and willingness to hear from your residents and business community. Your dedication and availability to our citizens are noteworthy and appreciated. As an alternative to the term bicentennial, the term score is also used to describe a 20-year period of time. The term originates back to one of the earliest businesses of raising large herds of sheep or cattle. After each count of 20, the shepherd or rancher would make a notch on a stick. As we continue to celebrate our city's growth and prosperity during the first night of our 4th of July festival, I'd offer up a toast to celebrate this notch on a stick be one of many more to come. Thank you for the opportunity for the chamber to recognize your success, and again, congratulations to the city on this milestone. And again, congratulations to the city on this milestone, and happy birthday, Siri.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah. That's all of our presentations. Okay, at this time, I will ask if we have public comment on this item?
Yes, uh, the city clerk's office has received public comment. We'll start with Anil Reddy. Anil, are you here?
Anil, welcome.
Good evening, council and the city staff and the people of Rancho Cordova. I feel so proud to be part of this council chamber and standing today. I moved to Rancho Cordova in 2008 as an young engineer to the, living in a data drive. And I was out of touch with most of the community events. And, uh, one fine morning in 2007, 2013, I met, um, Black Mayor, uh, Dan Skogland. And one day, he invited me to the city office on his chambers. And ever since, I never stopped coming to the office here. And I feel so fortunate part of this, um, city. This city blessed me with so many things, and, um, I don't know how to thank that enough. And, um, when we look at the, the million dreams and the hot air balloon, it, it's a slot. As a engineer, I run a big programs and we do the retrospects. And when we do the retro, retrospects, I use the hot balloon, um, as analogy showing what's helping us to move up and what does the sunny skies represents? Or, and what is those sandbags which holds, holds us down? And what is the cloud storms that show us, right, what's coming? Whoever come up with that whole thing, it's a beautifully represented. And again, that's another great thing. And to end, right, I, I remember a, um, um, a small stanza from a poet from India. It says, "Janda uncha raha amara. Vijay viswame amara tiranga pyara." What does that mean? Our flag stays high and we will be victorious in the world and with the three colors so loudly. Thank you.
Thank you, Anil. That's very nice. Anybody else?
The city clerk's office also received public comment via email from Tara Colvin-Bach that has been presented to the city council and emailed to each of you. It's been placed in the binder and printed in the back of the council chambers, and it's been placed on the city's website. Uh, there's no additional comment and there's no hands that are raised in Zoom.
Okay, anybody else tonight?
Linda, I just wanted to really quickly thank all of the, the young kids that we heard bouncing around in here on their kid, on their parents' laps. I know 10 years ago, I had a one and a half year old and another kid that was almost on the way. And I remember going around to people and apologizing for how noisy my kid was. But all of those well-behaved kids, good job, and parents, good job. Even, even with them making noise, it was really fun to have a bunch of little kids in the room again.
Thank you, Donald. So before we go to council comments, um, I will ask if there's any requests for future agenda items? And hearing none, then we will take council comments. And I would say that this has been an incredible opportunity to celebrate what is best about Rancho Cordova. We, as Shelley, as the, as the song says, we really did start off, actually Bob, back in 1978, with a dream of the world that we could live in. And it took some time to get to the ballot in 2002. And as, as Micah said, 77% of everybody, all the voters in Rancho Cordova approved cityhood, and it remains a record for the number of people who voted to incorporate their cities in the state of California. And we have grown from 55,000, which was the absolute minimum that we wanted, to, um, 81 or 82,000 today. And we could never have envisioned what 2023 would bring. The, um, the remarkable, as, um, somebody said, the physical changes in the city of Rancho Cordova, the remodeling of five lanes of ugly concrete into a really beautiful boulevard with, with sidewalks. It, we would go to DC and tell people it was the first sidewalks that have been built on the south side of Folsom Boulevard since the Sacramento Valley Railway was constructed in 1859. And their eyes would get really big, you know, like, oh my goodness. It just, this is an amazing place to be. And as community council has, has, um, entreated us, has reminded us, this is just the first million dreams. We haven't gotten all million done, but we want everybody to think about the next million. What do we want to do in the next 20 years? Where do we want to be? And with that, I will ask Donald for comments.
Nope, I did mine during, during council comments.
Garrett?
I'm just honored to be a part of this amazing city. It was, let's see, I grew up in Fair Oaks in Citrus Heights. And so I always knew Rancho Cordova across the way of where all, where you went to find, um, uh, cars and parts. So where you, that's where you came. And, um, a long time ago, my sister, who will be showing up any minute, you'll know it because she looks exactly at me, but three times as loud, it's amazing, um, comes in this building. Yeah, it's a, it's a treat. She is the one that actually was, I was living in Woodland at the time, and she was looking for houses, or helped me look for houses for me to start my family with. And my wife said that we weren't allowed to have kids until I had a house to put the kids into. So she went out and we found these houses way out, way past Rancho, into an area called Anatolia. And so we were the first, one of the first people to, to find these houses out by an interesting pork rind smelling plant. And, um, it has been literally the best decision of my life. I came here, I fell in love with the city, I fell in love with every piece of it, and I loved being a stone as it got to grow. Being one of the first black council members and the first black mayor and one of the first minorities of the council was amazing. But honestly, our city happens to be so diverse that it's just blending in. I mean, we're, we have, we have over, what was it, the last time? We speak over 99 different languages and have over 70 different races. And that's just in the city. And you walk down some of our more, our, even our newer areas, and they're so diverse, you don't see the same culture, same person from one door to the next. And yet, we all know that we love this city. And we do anything to keep the city protected. And honestly, we're one of those groups that will stand and fight, and especially me, to make sure that the city keeps growing in the right direction. And we see so much. I, I, I've had more people come up to me and tell me how amazing the city has gone for the last 20 years. I mean, in another, like, 10, who knows where we're gonna be? I mean, new school district, new everything that basically comes into it. And it's gonna make this facility, this, this city grow closer together. And I don't see us separating anytime. The thing is, a lot of cities like ours seem to separate or break off into little pieces, but we're all kind of one Rancho. And with that saying, we all kind of stay together to take those next steps. And honestly, by the grace of God, I hear, okay, so here's the most fun story I have, since it is our 20 and I get to talk. Politician. I was approached when I was, became a politician, and I wanted to know what made Rancho special. And so this guy took me on, uh, they called it Religious Row at one time, it's where all the churches were. And what I heard is, not only did the airbase start us, but before the airbases, there was three pastors, a pastor, a priest, and I believe another pastor came together and said, "We wanna move to California because we believe God is calling us to come there and preach to the people and help take it to the next generation." And so they all left, and they were from the Midwest, New York, and somewhere down south. And they landed all in Rancho Cordova all at the same time. And they started the major churches, because there was three that basically started the city of Rancho Cordova on Religious Row, which if you know where that is, it's over by, um, uh, Folsom Cordova Partnership in that area. And those churches are what really started Rancho Cordova. And so I feel like Rancho is God ordained to be this amazing place to where people come together to do what's right for people and take the next steps. We're the only place that basically, isn't even part of our city, built homeless vet shelters. Thanks to you, Bob. You realize that's all you. We're one of those places that invests millions of dollars into its school district when it doesn't have to. We're one of the few cities that takes its money, its tax money. And not only are, we take our tax, we reinvest it back in our city. And it's crazy to think that our city is one of the two that starts out in the black. So we don't have debt. And I think that just makes us special, because Rancho Cordova, not only we penny pension, but we care about where every dollar spent, because we want to go back to our city. So I know the city's about to change a bunch. We have a bunch of new rules and regulations, but I know the heart of Rancho will never change. And I can trust, even if I'm not here, the next Rancho Cordovan that steps into my seat will be an amazing person and will take us that next mile. And so I just want to say thank you to the city, thank you to my citizens, thank you to everybody for giving me this chance to be just a special, like, a special person at this time to help you take those next steps. And I can't wait to see what happens in the next, what was the word? Bicennial?
Next million years, next million dreams.
Bicennial? Bicennial. Bicennial. Next bicennial. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. Siri?
Well, thank you all for the birthday wishes. I can now officially say that I've lived more than half my life in Rancho Cordova. I moved to Sacramento for my master's in electrical engineering and, um, got a job over at Intel. Me and my husband both worked at Folsom, but for some reason, we fell in love with Rancho Cordova. We bought our first home at Mather and quickly moved over to this side, uh, Rancho Cordova and have been here since that, nearly 20 years, more than 20 years now. Had both my kids here, and they love the city. We love the community feel for the city. You know, when I first started as an engineer, they, they had this program, it's called the PC Pod Program, which gives back to the community. And I thought, you know, hey, I'm Asian, Indian woman, who wants to hear from me, right? I didn't have the guts to even want to give back to the community. When I had kids, I saw that there were, you know, the city is so diverse. There's so many kids that are looking up for role models. So I stepped up and started working in the community promoting STEM. And one thing led to another, and seeing my work in community service, Anil here, with the recommendation of Diane Rogers, kind of, uh, asked me to run for city council, and that's where I am here. You know, it's still me, the really shy kid trying to see, you know, if I can stand. I see a lot of people, you know, you see, I get tongue lashing, I get pushed back. But I have, I know people who have my back, and that's what this community is. I know my council members have my back, I know my city has my back, and this is a beautiful city to be, and I wish to be here for the next 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Siri. David?
Thank you, Linda. I've just been sitting here reflecting on this moment and thinking how hard it is to imagine that it's been 20 years. This is 20 years ago. 20 years ago, my son wasn't born. He's 18. Just graduated from high school. 20 years ago, my hair was brown.
And you had more of it.
And there was a lot more of it. Thank you. Thank you, Linda. And I, I was a little skinnier, uh, 20 years ago. It's, it's hard to believe it's been that long. But, you know, we have been blessed with some amazing leadership here in Rancho Cordova over those years, and even before our incorporation. Linda talked a little bit about it. There's a wonderful book that the city put together. I don't know if any of us has that here. It might be available out in the lobby. This sort of tells you the history of Rancho Cordova pre-incorporation and, and goes through some of the struggles of incorporation. But, you know, the, the people who come to mind, you know, the really key people who made this place a city are people like Kurt Haven. Is Kurt in the room? Probably out schmoozing in the lobby. Linda helped make us a city. Dave Roberts, our first mayor, who passed away way too soon in his life, helped to make us a city in a very unique way. Bob McGarvey, sitting right there in the front row, often called the father of cityhood because he's stuck with it longer than anybody else, to be sure we're a city. Amazing leadership. Dan Skogland, who was, gosh, he had wore a lot of hats, Dan did. Served with incredible honor here on our planning commission and then on the city council and numerous other roles in this community. Ken Cooley, one of my original colleagues sitting in the front row. And, uh, Ted Gabler, our first city manager, sitting right back there. Amazing leadership that put us on a course for where we are now. You know, our first call, I think, as a city, um, was public safety. And that is something you, if you reflect now on where we were then and where we are now, it has been an incredible turnaround. Um, I saw the statistic recently that said crime is down overall 60% in Rancho Cordova since our incorporation. And I've seen some estimates that are even more generous than that, depends on whether you count population growth or not. But we have really succeeded in that, in a lot of ways, that people did not think was possible and probably still don't entirely believe. But that is an enormous, um, credit to all of us. If you think through all the things that cities touch as we do our work, um, it's a lot. Cities are not single-use entities. We don't just do parks, for example. We don't do parks at all. We don't just do streets. We don't just do police. We do a lot of different functions. So it's impossible for me in just a few minutes here to, to sort of list what I think all the great things are that Rancho has accomplished, but I'm gonna throw out some topics. Think of what we've done for kids over the past 20 years. Whether that's a new girls softball facility, whether that's a little league facility that's still coming, after, it's been too many years. Whether it's a youth center that just opened, or whether it's literally millions of dollars spent in partnership with schools or doing various youth programs. The amount of effort we've put into the kids in this community is probably unmatched by any city I'm aware of in the region. The amount of effort we've put into the kids in this community is probably unmatched by any city I'm aware of in the region. That's something really special that we've done and we've done that respecting our diversity and having an enormous sense of camaraderie in this city. We have never lost that. I always wonder where that came from. Is that an artifact of the air force? Why do so many diverse people here get along so well? It's not something common because we hear that all the time from people who are new to Rancho Cordova or visit us or consultants or whoever. They come in and say, you know, something is different about this place. I think it might be that air force heritage that sort of bound, bound us all together in a common mission. Another category, the arts. I could say probably 20 years ago, there was no art effort in Rancho Cordova. And now it's enormous. We're building a large facility to, to promote the arts. We already have a facility, one of our most historic buildings that Linda saved and, uh, Regional Transit rebuilt. And then we found a purpose for in terms of art. It's an amazing partnership that we've done there. But that art thing is so much bigger. It's the fact that I mentioned earlier, we have a symphony. We have a community band. We have art shows constantly going on in this building. We have art outreach to schools. I could go on, but I, I won't. There's too much, but you get the idea. Animals. We have done probably more creative and productive things for animal control and animal welfare than any other jurisdiction in the region. Employment. We have maintained and grown the largest employment center in the Sacramento region in Rancho Cordova. And that was set in motion frankly before we were a city in great part because of some developers who were here, but we've maintained it and we've grown it. And we've seen enormous recent success in that. So we should be really proud of that. We've done a lot for veterans in terms of housing, programming. I think we're the only agency that has provided, uh, as much affordable housing for veterans. Maybe in the state of California, certainly with the level of support that we have provided those vets. I think we should be very proud of that. And speaking of housing, we've done a lot of housing and not just new homes, we've done affordable housing. We've got a lot more housing to do. And we have created some incredible partnerships along the way. Whether it be with the Cordova Community Council and Shelley, who you heard from before, or Diane and the Chamber of Commerce. These are not normal partnerships you see in other communities. These are something special we do here in Rancho Cordova. We also do this with our school district, with our park district, with our district attorney, which was actually on the agenda tonight, uh, with the probation department. We have lots of partnerships that most cities don't, don't take the time to create, don't have the ability to create. But we do those things. And we do all these things with balanced budgets, something else that's really unusual and we should be excited about because we've always, we've always had a balanced budget. We've always had a surplus. And the other thing we do that's really unusual is fun. For some reason, Rancho Cordova, we always have to have more fun than everybody else. A lot of people mentioned that tonight and that's a very important thing, I think, of who we are. Because we're not only blessed with, you know, great leaders who sort of formed this city, but we're also the beneficiary of the sense that we ought to have fun doing everything we do. And so I think we carry that out and thank you Supervisor Desmond for calling that out. I think that's a very important thing of what we do. The other important thing we do as a city is attention to detail. You know, whether it's code enforcement or whether it's an organization that's struggling, that we have a means of helping through the Cordova Community Council, or avenues that we can frankly take advantage of or, or exploit or assist. These are things that we do because our leadership put it in place. And of course, we've won a lot of awards. We've been an All-America City twice. We're a tree city. There's a, we're a fun city. We've won a lot of awards and I think appropriately so. And we've done so much development. Linda mentioned Folsom Boulevard. I think if you polled our residents and just asked them, what's the number one thing you've seen change in 20 years? Folsom Boulevard usually comes up. I think because it's so impactful for everyone who lives here. If you remembered what it was like before and what it looks like now, it's hard to imagine that's the same place. And it's not ironically because of all the development that's happened along the Boulevard, because that's still to come. It's just the infrastructure of it, the sense of place that you have in it. And that's something we're good at and we've been successful with. We've had some luck, but also a great deal of skill. And we've been served by enormously gifted, uh, public servants. We started, I think, on the right foot there and we've maintained a very high level, very high caliber of, uh, of, of public servants among our staff for the city. You know, we sat down as an original city council, one of the first things we knew we needed to tackle was image. And I think everything I just mentioned speaks to image and the power of image for what it means for us going forward and what it means to be a Rancho Cordova now. And that will remain, I think, our primary goal for the next 20 years. We have to continue to build on image because it informs us. It, in, it, um, it enhances our sense of well-being. It's part of our quality of life, the image of the place you live in. And that is our fundamental calling as a city is to enhance that quality of life. So I want to congratulate my colleagues on 20 years. I want to congratulate the various alumni we have in the room. And I want to thank our residents for their partnership and their support these 20 years and this work that we've done. This is not something the city has done for our residents. This is something the city has done in partnership with our residents. Because that's a fundamental tenet of how we do everything. Now, we need to celebrate this. We need to celebrate, uh, our nation's independence as well. There's a lot of great and good things that can happen. There's a lot of great and good things that are yet to happen. And that's, I think, what is most exciting for me. So not only have we seen a million dreams through the first 20 years of our city, but we've got a couple million yet to go. And that's what I'm excited about. And that's what I think everybody here is also excited about, about where we're gonna end up. So with that, keep on dreaming. May God bless Rancho Cordova, the great city of Rancho Cordova. And this weekend, may God bless America.
You're here.
Thank you.
And you can invite us to...
With that, I think, uh, our business having concluded, I am going to move to adjourn. And I'm gonna ask the audience to please join us in the lobby. I think we have some bubbly liquid in tall glasses, if I'm not mistaken. And there's a vehicle out there that is called a street train
Sasha?
that is intended to take some of us to
Bonjour.
Hagan Park for further celebration. So with that, I move it for us to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Hi. Let's go party.
Good night, everyone. Thank you all for being here.